Patrick in Chambers, just doing a sound check.
Yeah, hearing you good.
Thank you so much. Hi, councillor Mackay, it's Sean Kirkpatrick here, just doing a quick audio check, please.
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear, how about me?
Yep, you're coming in nice and clear too, thank you.
Great.
How's everyone?
Good. Ready? Nervous?
I didn't think so.
Hi councillor Mackay, it's Sean Kirkpatrick here, just doing a quick audio check, please. Yep, I can hear you loud and clear, how about me?
Yep, you're coming in nice and clear too, thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Call for the vote.
Mayor, I'm in favor, my chat, it's just sticking, so I am in favor, thank you.
Did you get councillor Mackay's vote, it was no? Okay, so we're all done, okay, that passes unanimously. We do have two scheduled presentations. We have Mr Kevin Jones from the Friends of the Northern Alberta Children's Festival, joining us, so Kevin, why don't you make your way to the mic, are you the only one speaking, oh! You're not speaking at all, that's okay, I saw Patrick registered, I didn't know if you guys were doing a group?
No.
Just you, thank God. Thank you for joining us, and I mean, I think this, we did this the first time last year, I think, yeah, I think it's a great way to check in with how the festival went and what you guys have planned for next year, so take it away whenever you're ready.
Oh, it looks like someone's got my presentation up, so yeah, I'm here with my colleagues Connie Reggie and Kevin Jones. So I'm Patrick Rabby, I represent the board for the Friends, for those councillors and our guests on the Zoom call that haven't met me before, so we're a nonprofit board that works in collaboration with the city of St Albert to advocate for and help fund our annual Children's Festival, which is a feature of the St Albert community. And thank you to Mayor and Council and our guests on Zoom for having us today. So we are very proud for the work that we do in conjunction with the city of St Albert to use arts to spark the imagination of children in our community. In the words of this teacher from this year's festival, "The future performances were fabulous, our whole school attended the festival and we saw three different future performances and the staff and students loved all of them." And I think this quote highlights the care and attention that the city puts into festival programming, it's a big reason that the city of St Albert Festival has such a fantastic reputation in our broader community around St Albert. We provide, City in conjunction with the board provides an affordable uplifting family experience for the community, it's become an integral part of the St Albert brand, according to this parent. Parent, my daughter is one, and we weren't sure of what we would get out of going, but as a first time attendee, we were very impressed. We look forward to coming again next year, city staff does a fantastic job finding and attracting great artists and shows both locally and abroad. To create an affordable welcoming experience for everyone in the surrounding community. The festival programming reflects the cultural diversity of the community, it's a tenant of the festival. And this year, our festival hosted artists and performers from across Canada and across the globe. For truly diverse experience, including French bilingual artists and indigenous artists. Inclusive education, students love the festival and the sensory and interactive installations such as the Dalem Luminarium. City works hard to reduce barriers to accessibility while providing unique arts experiences, in the words of one teacher, I was there yesterday in my child. Class to see ill abilities, no excuses, no limits, I've never been moved by performance the way I was with yours. I cried, I laughed, I learned, every child, any age should see your show. Festival has a long history of collaborating with our educators and students in St. Albert and surrounding communities. Educating educators and students are one of our biggest stakeholders in the community, and the board does our best to provide feedback and advocate for the festival with educators. This year, we had a feature presentation from Architects of Air, the Dalem Luminarium. The was a fifteen thousand square foot interactive installation of light, sound and air that drew in five thousand visitors, I hope council got a chance to. Check it out, it was, it was amazing. The sculpture was brought to our festival with help from the Art Development Advisory Committee and the Public Art Reserve. And the sculptures toured the world, so we're very pleased to be able to bring it to the festival this year, there's a lot of work involved in bringing that to festival. So how did our forty-second year? Festival shape up, a fantastic work on behalf of the city to grow the festival, twenty-five percent of public attendees. Were new to festival, sixty percent of attendees were from outside St. Albert, which drives economic impact in our community. Ninety-one percent satisfaction rate for attendees in twenty twenty-three. Grew public ticket sales by seventy-seven percent to eighteen thousand, grew student attendance by ninety-eight point five percent to ten thousand. Brought over twenty-two thousand people to the downtown core, and at the same time, our fantastic sponsorship coordinator grew sponsorship by twenty-one percent. So fantastic work by our colleagues at the city. Board achievements in twenty twenty-three, so the board helped secure with help from the city, grant funding total one hundred seventy-one thousand, up from one hundred and forty-three thousand in twenty twenty-two. Community fundraising grew by thirty percent to six point six thousand. And initial budget of five hundred and ninety-two thousand and projected net cost of one hundred eighty-two thousand to the city. Due to strong ticket sales and grant funding support from the friends in the city of around one hundred and eighty thousand, final net cost of the city in twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three was twenty-three and a half thousand. Thirteen seconds left. We expect grants in twenty twenty-four to be a hundred and forty K. Sorry, Sean, I'm not getting my next slide. There it goes. That's here, but it's not there. We expect grants in twenty twenty-four to be a hundred and forty K, we expect to grow board fundraising, we have a target of another fifteen percent growth. And we expect to continue growing our board positions to bring more advocacy and more financial fundraising capability to the board. And with that, thank you very much for your attention.
Awesome, so hold it on that side there, so. Almost six hundred K net cost of one hundred and two to see, okay, sorry, now it's gone. Can you go backward shot, thanks?
One more shot.
It's all good, pardon? Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so twenty-three point five K to the city, that. That's what you're saying?
So that, that was the leftover amount that the city had to contribute to cover ticket sales, and actually. You know, there was a projected cost to the city of one hundred and eighty-two K, but we did such a great job with ticket sales and fundraising, social media campaign this year was absolutely out of this world. We brought in so many more new people that that cost was brought down to twenty-three and a half.
Perfect, and it says community fundraising grew by thirty percent, which is amazing, did you guys have a? A signature sponsor?
Not really, so all of that fundraising is organic, we do it through gift wrap. Drive-in movies at the mall and other events that we run, and then that's not including casino revenue, which every eighteen months kicks in about another twenty-five, thirty K somewhere on there.
Cool, and then the next slide we didn't see, can we see it, Sean? There we go, okay.
So next year, grants are expected to be a hundred and forty K, so there's some downward pressure there that we need to mitigate, and we're working on. And we will have casino revenue flowing in hopefully next year, but it may be the year after.
How often do you get a casino?
About every eighteen months or so, that's the cycle, and that's probably our biggest, most.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yeah, it's huge.
That seems actually not bad, eighteen months, a lot of St. Albert charities are waiting over two years, so.
Yeah, and you know, that, that experience, if that's moving, then that could be our experience as well, so I think we were about. I think our next scheduled application is summer of twenty-four, and so hopefully we'll see those funds inside of next year.
Okay, cool. We'll let council know if you need volunteers for the casino night, I'm very good at counting cash at two in the morning. And do you need to go board fund, oh, sorry, a board fundraising capacity, additional, so additional board positions, that was my next question.
Yeah.
What, what are we looking at for your max board, and what do you have right now?
Right now, we have. Nine people. We just added another financial professional to our board, fundraising is the biggest, most difficult spot to find, and that's where we struggle the most. Because we're such a small board, and we have such a limited number of hours that we can draw on, but you know, we've been working closely with the city lately to use the volunteer. Expertise they've built up inside the festival to work our events, and it's been fantastic, so now the mall keeps approaching us to come wrap gifts. It's a little thing we can do for the community, but it's a great way to collect donations, and we had a lot of success last year with help from the city on our fifty-fifty draw. Which also is starting to gain some traction, so I think it's going to be a couple more years of growing that, and hopefully we'll be able to. Continue growing our, our organic fundraising.
Awesome, all right, council, any questions from, from members of you guys, you know, hands up online. Councillor Broadhead, councillor Killick, you're good? I probably asked all your questions. All right, well, thank you for coming, and honestly, thank you to you and the whole board. What do I see, oh, go ahead councillor Manceki.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation, I'm glad you had such great success with your fundraising, I just had one question, you were selling some swag last year, was that beneficial or not?
Yes, it's very low-cost inventory that we were using to entice people to. To buy fifty-fifty tickets, the net cost of that, I remember was in the hundreds of dollars. And somewhere around there, but the, the net amount of funds we raised was close to twenty-five hundred dollars, so somewhere in that range. So that was the first year that we'd done that, and we, we keep looking for like a low-cost ways to kind of. Hand out branding for the festival and really involve kids, and we've got some more ideas for this year, but we, we really do try to keep our costs on the board. At absolute minimum and keep up. The maximum percentage going into the city at hand, so we typically do not buy inventory or other goods for sale.
Okay, I just knew about the socks last year, so I wanted to know if, if you sold anything else besides that or not.
Manceki wants more socks.
Okay, more socks, all right, so, so the board.
Only if it's worthwhile.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that too, and you know, the city, the city is such a big help in planning this, we couldn't do it without them, and so if there are socks, they're. Yeah, so we, I'll, I'll check into that. Yeah, no, no socks.
But essentially, your, the role of your society, it's a society, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You're not organizing, you're not planning, you're not running the Children's Festival, you are the arm that. Is a registered not-for-profit that can help with grants and fundraising, et cetera.
And advocacy, yeah, and our own fundraising, so that's exactly right, mayor. The, the operational expertise, all the, the volunteer coordination, even the grant writing, a lot of the expertise is all in the city staff. And so they're doing the lion's share of the work, and we're just here to. To raise awareness in the community and, and try to bring in offset some of the funds.
So time commitment wise for a board member, what would that be?
Oh, a time commitment, so there's ten meetings a year, there for two hours each, we typically held here in St. Albert, but we have Zoom capability as well. And, and yeah, we're really looking for fundraising expertise to, for our board, so.
Cool.
I just had one more question, mayor, if I could.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, I was just concerned about when you're doing your fundraising, is there ever any, you know, like. I guess disconnect where it says International Children's Festival and then St. Albert Children's Festival, do you have to clarify that to people? That it's in St. Albert when you're doing your fundraising or not, for the best part, it's.
Not for the most part, so it, St. Albert doesn't actually appear in our logo either, it's Northern Alberta International Children's Festival. And for the most part, when, when we are doing our fundraising, we're doing it. Very close to the, to the donor so far, and so that, that goes without saying almost.
Okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
That might be why you get more frequent casinos, are you, do you do the casino in St. Albert? Or is it in Edmonton?
The, it's the one in St. Albert. And it's, I wouldn't say it's more frequent, I don't think we get special treatment there, I think the schedule has been about eighteen months, but it could be.
Longer now.
It could be six months till our next one, which would put it in about twenty-four month range.
And I feel like twenty-five thousand dollars is an enormous amount to raise in a St., the St. Albert Casino, most charities are re, going eight to ten.
So actually, our, I'm not sure if this is okay, but I'll just keep going, so the. I, I think. The feedback I'm getting is that most casinos do a little better. And that that's kind of typical, or the twenty, twenty to thirty mark, and but. Per hour of volunteer work, there's nothing that even comes close, so it's such a huge benefit for us to be able to, to participate in that.
Edmonton casinos are bringing in fifty to seventy. Which is, which is a huge issue for this council, we've been working with AGLC, and our new minister Dale Nally is in charge of. Gaming, so we're trying to get him to pull the money provisionally, but that's not an issue.
Yeah, there's some disparity there, on which casino you get selected for, it's something we've been looking at, but I don't know that we'll have. The ability to kind of get out of that.
Okay, yeah, again, the offer's there to count money.
Thank you guys so much.
Thanks so much. All right, we have one other registered speaker, we have Brian and Lisa Broger, or Brian, Lisa, Brian, thank you for joining us, come to the mic whenever you have a chance. Appreciate you making the time.
Thank you, how are you doing today?
We're all good, yeah.
Oh, I don't really have much to say.
We, we've read, we've read, you know, your submission, and I don't want to put you in an awkward situation, so. Just say what you need to say, it's five minutes, it's very casual, don't be nervous at all.
Okay, sure, well.
Speak to us like we're your neighbor.
Sure, okay. Okay, sorry, so I had a, we had an issue in our home that began. It's. A, a whole, everything just went out of control quickly, and. My wife became very ill and became the center of our attention, and still is. And during that time. I lost a key to my mailbox, now, I had never received any personal mail in my mailbox. And I had. I guess, it doesn't matter, but I've been under the assumption that I had paid my taxes every month, and I don't know why I never checked into it. This was for a new address, sixteen Ball Morel Drive, and then. Things pushing it to shut, but we were in hospitals and we were twenty-four seven busy working with their health, and then about. Well, this year, I don't remember when, June or July, I think, in the meantime, I had a flood in my house, so everything was in disorder. And so after they were done the reconstruction, I found my key to my mailbox, I opened it up, and I found out that I had been missing tax payments since July of. Twenty twenty-two, and the mailbox quit checking my mail in September of twenty twenty-two. And so as soon as I found out I paid my tax bill here, but I'm just sort of appealing for. Because there was a, I don't remember, six or eight thousand dollars in fees, penalties and fees for not paying the taxes. I mean, yes, I should have been on top of the situation, I. The extenuates, the circumstances that I was in were, were pretty tough, and they still are a little bit tough, but they're better. But. And, and I mean, I haven't included in the letter from my doctor, from my wife's doctor, indicating the details, but. There's, it's a bit more complicated than what they're presenting, but. The fact of the matter is that. A few things went to the wayside, and this is one of them, and. This is just an appeal for some respect on the, on the penalties of the taxes, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm not sure if there's any questions, I, I only have one, is your wife, you said it's a bit better, your wife is doing okay?
A little bit.
So when we get to this agenda item, which is coming up like, like three minutes or so into our agenda, you're welcome to sit around, our staff will have a presentation. Talks about the policy and how council. Functions and deals with these kind of requests, so please feel free to stick around, and then we probably will be going into camera, which means we. Have a conversation outside of the public realm, and so we're going to do that just in a room down here. Because there's more than just yourself that is asking for this, and then we will come back in the public, and then we'll have decisions. If you want to, yeah, for sure, if you don't stick around, you're, the decision that council makes, we'll get. We'll let you know probably in the next day or two, but you're welcome to stay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, any questions, council, that I missed, okay, thank you. All right, that was presentations. We have next on our agenda was business arising, we'll talk about the. Property tax relief requests in a minute, so I won't take any questions on that, but is there any questions about the Children's Festival? Seeing none, then we're going to move straight into consent agenda, who would like to move that? Councillor Broadhead, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, just can I confirm that nine point one has been pulled from consent?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, and I'll read it as follows. I move that the recommendation in the following agenda reports be approved, six point one, special committee, the whole meeting minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And regular council meeting minutes of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Seven point one, twenty twenty-four, public appointments to the St. Albert Civic Agencies and quasi judicial boards. Seven point two, standing committee of the whole item, automated enforcement service delivery.
Perfect, call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that motion passes unanimously. So as we go through our agenda, the next thing was on consent, which was the minutes from November fifteenth and November twenty-first. The next thing was also on consent, which was the two thousand and twenty-four public appointments to St. Albert Civic Agencies. So council met. When did we meet, guys, earlier this month? November fourth, yeah, and spent. A full day, a long day, eighty applicants for positions, which was fantastic, probably a record, Cheryl, in St. Albert. Eighty people interested in serving on various committees, we just appointed. I'm not going to read because there's probably. How many thirty-odd positions that we appointed, something like, I was just like, yeah, somewhere around there, these will be made public when Cheryl, because it was on consent. Is it, will it go up on the website, or will you send emails or letters out?
So they'll be coming from your depart, from your area, the, the EA is already aware of it, and so should be going out fairly shortly before Christmas.
Perfect, all right, so congratulations to the various people that were either appointed or reappointed to a committee. Council obviously really appreciates the commitment and time that you take to give us good advice. And then also on consent, we know. Yes, was a committee conversation we had last week, which was about, or it was actually last month, automated enforcement service delivery. So the motion was that our automated, automat. Automated? Photo reader, how would we say that, be maintained as outline in option A status quo in the attachment report. Photoreader, how would we say that? Be maintained as outline in option A status quo in the attachment report. Um, with no no changes given the provincial announcement. Um, I would like to point out that when the province did make their announcement, they did it on the exit ramp of Anthony Henday onto Ray Gibbon Drive. And it did make it appear like that was a St. Albert photorator location with a fair amount of revenue. Um, I would like to point out that that is an Edmonton location in case anyone who thought that that was St. Albert. I think that's important to point out. Now we're on to property tax reliefs. So Mr. Stephen Bannerman is here with us. He's our city assessor. Um, he's going to take us through our policy, our processes, and then I will entertain a motion to go in camera. So go ahead, Stephen.
Good afternoon. I have a quick presentation, PowerPoint presentation here and I'll share my screen. There we are. Good afternoon. I'm Stephen Bannerman. I'm the manager, or excuse me, senior manager and city assessor for the city of St. Albert. And I'm here to present property tax relief. Taxation Department receives several requests for property tax relief each year, primarily due to late payments.
Stephen, it's kind of hard to hear you. I don't know where the mic is.
I've turned my mic on here, but I'll just lean forward a little.
Thank you.
It's easier to see my notes anyway with my glasses on. So the taxation department will receive several requests for property tax relief each year, primarily due to late payment. The reasons for late payment are varied and diverse. Administration can only reduce a penalty if we've had made an error or misrepresentation. Further administration may only adjust the current year, which is two thousand twenty-three. Section three forty-seven of the municipal government act allows only council to cancel, reduce, refund, or defer all or part of the tax. Section two oh three prohibits council from giving its power to the assessor or taxation coordinator. And Janice Wetstein is available online as well and should be joining me for presentation later on when we go in camera. This is why we now present this summary to council. Importantly, only council has the ability to provide leniency in instances where the city has not aired. CFS fifteen was developed for a number of reasons, but primarily is to provide council with a set of goalposts. While still having the power to use its own discretion, as well as communicating with property owners, what criteria will be considered in any request? Each applicant has provided a copy of the policy. And when council will hear the requests on December fifth. Some typical penalty amounts include eight hundred and eighty dollars annually for a single family dwelling and five hundred and twenty-eight for a condo. This is around the nearest dollars. These rates are non-compounded in the first year. And on the slide, it's just an example of a house assessed at five hundred thousand in two thousand twenty-three. And a condo on your right assessed at three hundred thousand two hundred and twenty in twenty twenty-three. When considering requests, council would take into consider the following principles. Fairness and equity to all taxpayers, sustainability of municipal reserves, and the simplicity, transparency, and efficiency of the tax levy process. And finally, predictable leap and stability. There's two categories on this slide. There's a permissible category and a non-permissible category. The highlighted underneath the permissible is is the two thousand twenty-three requests and the majority are on compassionate grounds. Exemption, eligibility, and errors. Um, they're really not an issue for this two thousand twenty-three tax year. Compassionate um, requests, but uh, an example will be on the next slide. On the right, the non-permissible categories include failure to receive, payment delays, and natural disasters. There's more summary in the policy sheet you require. And with that, a compassionate ground sample would be council may provide tax relief in extent in sustaining circumstances that merit compassion. And so a property owner was in the hospital with a critical illness and could not attend the payment of their taxes. We have a standard process in assessment tax. The taxation department requires applicants to request forgiveness through a standardized form, which includes the reasons for a request. They also provide a copy of the policy and as a notice of the date for council. The administrative process, the assessment tax will provide a summary of the applicants and the tax dollars requested. However, individual applications are available in camera for council's consideration. The application forms often contain personal and confidential information. Property owners are given a chance to speak at councils. We just heard with Mr. Berger. And you may, they may address them in writing as well before the start of the meeting. Letters are mailed to each applicant informing them of the council date and the time that property tax forgiveness applications will be heard. And I'm available for questions.
All right, council, any questions um, of a public nature before we go in camera? Seeing none, can I get a member of council to make the motion, the first motion that we go um, in camera to, thank you, Council Kilik.
That council moving camera pursuant to section seventeen dash one of the Freedom of Information and Prote- Protection of Privacy Act, consider outstanding two thousand twenty-three requests for property tax relief.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. All right, uh, you're just going to keep the host there because we're coming back, right? Okay, so uh, give us a couple of minutes. Those of you online will meet you in council lounge.
All right, Cheryl, did you hear that we made a motion to reconvene by Council Jolly and it was unanimous? And we have no motions coming out of our in camera session. When I, am I still on camera? Okay, thank you, whoever did that. All right. Next agenda item, I believe, was the municipal by law, elections by law, which was pulled off consent for a quick change. So I don't feel like we need to do a presentation, Marta, because we saw it at committee. I'll just maybe take a motion, unless anyone has any questions before I go there. All right. Can I pick a member of council? Councilwoman Madsen, do you want to make the main motion and then Council Hughes can make her amendment?
Sure, I can do that, thank you.
Thanks.
Recommended motion that by law twenty five slash twenty twenty three amendment to the municipal elections by law being amended number two to by law twenty twenty seventeen be read a first time.
Perfect. Any comments on that before I call for a vote?
Uh, no comments from me, no, thank you.
Right. Thank you. Call for the vote.
I'm in favor. I lost my screen for a second.
Sorry, Council Mackay, what'd you say?
I'm in favor. Sorry, Madam Mayor, I've just lost my screen.
Okay. We're still waiting for us to get the votes too.
There it is.
There we go. And Council Mackay can't put it in the chat, but he said in favor. That passes unanimously. Do we do second reading and then make the amendment?
That's correct.
That's correct. Council Ramansky, go ahead.
That by law twenty five twenty twenty three be read a second time.
All right, Council Hughes, I'll go to you for the amendment now.
No, sorry, we have to vote on second.
You, we don't do it at second reading?
Yeah, we'll do the vote on second and then we'll do the amendment after.
Oh, okay. We'll vote on second then. Call for the vote. Sorry, can't, sorry, Marta, I thought we were going like as amended, kind of. Is that done? All right, that one is closed. Okay, that passes with Council Ramansky opposed. Was that correct, Council Ramansky? She voted in favor for the, for first reading, right? I just want to make sure I got that right. Council Ramansky?
Yes, I thought we were going to amendment before the vote, so that's why I voted no, uh, yes and first, and I'm voting against it as it sits, so I'll wait for the amendment. Thanks.
Okay. Council Hughes, go ahead.
That section two of by law twenty five slash twenty twenty three be amended to add the phrase, provided the returning officer implements a process prevent lectures from voting at more than one voting station within a single subdivision, immediately following the word stations.
All right, I'll accept that amendment. Any comments?
Here, can I ask question?
No. Oh, you have a question? Sorry, it didn't, sorry, I couldn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Um, so, um, I, I'm curious, administration, I was under the understanding that we already do this. Can, can we just confirm that we already do this?
So we don't actually have more than one voting station per subdivision right now, so we we don't deal with this issue in the way that it's being worded in this amendment.
But for, um, voting before the election day, so in that case, we have many different.
Yes, so for advanced votes, we do have many different mechanisms and we check everybody's voter ID. But this is slightly different. I think this amendment um, is drafted to ensure that in the case that we have more than one voting station in a subdivision, in a single subdivision, we take steps to ensure that a voter on that voting day can't go to more than one voting station in the subdivision. So we don't, I mean, in pro, in practicality, we do follow all the rules regarding voter identification and maintaining the integrity of the voting process. So there's not an administrative impediment to adding this to the bylaw. It wouldn't make a difference, but it, to answer your question, technically speaking, we don't do more than one voting station in a subdivision. So the way it's worded, we don't technically do that specifically.
Okay, but this is easy to implement kind of with our.
Yes, this won't change anything in terms of making decisions about adding extra voting stations or not. It just codifies what we discussed at the Standing Committee of the whole.
And you would have, you would have done this with or without the amendment.
That's true.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, sorry to accept prematurely, but now I will accept the amendment. Go ahead, Council Hughes, if you have anything to.
Yeah. Thank you. So, uh, thank you. So, um, this is not about Marta or any of the elections. This is just about making sure that what we agreed to in principle with the last meeting is solidified in writing so that there's no confusion at all of the public and no confusion going forward because this document will be standing here for years and years to come. And I just want to make sure it's very clear that we will be making sure that there's steps that will maintain the integrity of election process on election day, even if we do put more than one division or subdivision within it and subdivide it. So that is the intention behind it. Um, as you said, heard administrations, um, fully prepared to do that. But it's also about reassurances to the public that even though we are, we may be adding voting stations, that the opportunity to, um, abuse the trust in the election process will not be available to the public. And that we will make sure that only on election day, not about premature or pre-advanced voting, this election day, that one person only foot at one station. And, um, there will not be an opportunity for them to go to a different one for any reason. So that's the intention behind this. It's, it's just to make sure that going forward, um, conversations can be forgotten. What we remember is what's in writing.
That's great. Anyone else on this amendment? Seeing nothing, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously, Council Ramansky. Can I get? Oh, no, I need someone else to do. Well, I guess anyone can do unanimous consent, but we always go to someone different, so. Council Mackay, do you want to do unanimous consent? You are muted.
Thanks, sorry. Probably Ottawa should be muted. That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of by law twenty five slash twenty twenty three.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. We can proceed to third reading. Council Ramansky, am I putting you in a, in a tough place to do? Are you voting against this?
Well, it is because I, it should be as amended, right? So.
It says as amended.
Okay, so I, I'm not reading the original then.
No, as amended.
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
I'm fine, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
That by law twenty five slash twenty twenty three be read a third time.
As amended. Okay. All right. Anything further on that, anyone? Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. All right, we have one council motion from Council Jolly uh, on recruitment and onboarding of committee and council appointments. Council Jolly, I'll get you to read it into the record.
All right, hold on while I grab that. Sorry, I'm scrolling through my package here.
It's in the chat, Council Jolly.
Thank you. One fifty nine two, if that helps.
That by Q two twenty twenty four administration makes recommendations regarding best practices regarding recruitment and onboarding for committees of council appointments and associated recommendations for amendments to applicable policies or bylaws. And I, I, I'm not going to read the rest of it, just kind of.
Okay. Those are just examples. Okay.
Yeah.
But do you want them in the motion?
No.
Just best. So policies or bylaws, period, kick out the brackets. All right, before I accept that, is there any questions of, um, Council Jolly or administration? Council Mackay, is that your hand going up?
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I don't have a mouse with me, so I'm kind of scrolling. I, I just, I can I get a little bit more clarification, Council Jolly, as to what your, what the background is in relation to this? Because I, I was a little, I was a little, needed a little bit more information.
I think she said this while we were doing our interviews on.
Yeah, I did. So a couple of things, um, one, you know, the, the number of applicants we have has doubled um, since you and I started on council. Um, so just administratively, that causes a lot of, um, challenges. Another is we don't have a process for, um, ensuring that what applicants put on their applications is, is true. So for example, when you apply for any other job or volunteer appointment, there's, you know, criminal record checks. Um, you know, some of these committees deal with really sensitive information, you know, CSAC is a, a top example of that, but also others. Um, there's no requirement for volunteers to sign kind of privacy agreements, that kind of thing. Um, so, so that was of, of concern to me.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I, thanks, Council Jolly. I guess I question administration then, if you permit, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, yep.
Uh, from administrations under, understanding of the intent, when you're going to be looking at best practices and likewise, I, I understand that, that, that's makes perfect sense to me. But as an outcome, would you see maybe improving, like coming up with a standardized form that only they need to put out so we don't get resumes in the two hundred to three hundred page level? Or how would, how would you, how would you see this moving forward or an outcome of this?
Uh, thanks for the question. So be, when we were drafting the response to this notice of motion, we did a bit, a cursory kind of search in surrounding areas and there, there are some more robust processes implemented in other municipalities. So for example, things like vetting the applications to ensure that some qualifications like for the relevant committees are actually met. And so they're vetted out so that if there's a lot of applicants, they're not all ultimately interviewed by council. So like establishing some sort of a skills metric or an assessment in a vetting process prior to interviews taking place. Um, so there are, and there are things, when we started to look at this, yes, we probably lack in the confidentiality agreements department potentially, you know, for some committees that would make sense, not, maybe not for all, but I think there is an opportunity to take a step and review our practices and, and, um, suggest some improvements. I don't necessarily think any by law changes will result out of this, but maybe a change to the civic agency council policy potentially, I could see that coming out of this. Um, but I, I see this as a good opportunity to review our processes. I think it would be worthwhile.
Okay, well, I appreciate the feedback. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'll, I'm not going to get into debate or anything like that because I do have one concern that we would limit applications, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Well, it's Council Broadhead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, through you to administration, I suspect that we're going to be doing this around, uh, proposed motions now. So I'll ask the question, um, is this a significant body of work that will displace other required uh, work on the people that are going to be tasked with doing this work?
Hi, Council Broadhead. Um, so right now.
so, right now, for legislative services, is that what you're asking with ledge services? We have, uh, three major projects in ledge services, uh, for, um, the fall, but depending on how we decide to do it, some of the other, uh, uh, information that we receive from other surrounding municipalities is that it wasn't only council that did the recommend, or did the, uh, interviews, it was with the Chair of the Board, um, the staff liaison, and they would vet the resumes and then council, uh, if they were interested, could interview, but at that point, those were the individuals that interviewed, so there's some ways of making it more efficient and like Marta said, more robust, so we'd have good information, uh, coming from the applicants. So we, I guess a quick answer to your question, it might add a little bit of work at the initial, but I think at the end of the day, it would not be that bad.
Okay, fair enough, I'm not looking for council to get out of work, it's more about whether or not you're working, all right, fair enough, thank you.
Thank you. I see no more hands up. So I'll accept your motion, Council Jolly, go ahead.
Thank you, um, so I put this in, in a motion form instead of an IR form, because I, I wanted council support before administration undertakes the work. I think it's important that we are doing some basic vetting of, um, committee members that in some cases are seeing some really confidential information, um, especially for those, um, that look at grant applications, um, so this is an opportunity to improve our process, um, to reduce risk um, and, and to make sure that we're continuing to see great outcomes, so that's why this, uh, why I brought this forward.
All right, is anyone else have any, Council Ramansky, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I won't be supporting this one, um, I find the, this day that we spend with the community is our our only connect to the public, so i- it's a chance for us to sit down, I mean, I enjoy the day going through all the people, and I mean, uh, we did have a lot of applicants this year, eighty of them, but predominantly, you know, if you took out, uh, the youth and police committee, it really wasn't that many for all the other committees, and again, um, I enjoy the fact that it's a hands-on council with the public, and, um, I'm a little bit apprehensive, you know, with, with, uh, administration vetting those, that it's, we're losing our connect, and then, uh, we might miss people that, you know, administration doesn't, you know, see as ideal or, or sort of a hiring process, we have council, we have administration, and the public is to be our connect between the two. Uh, also with the policies, I mean, there is privacy directed in the policies when they are, you know, when they are given the instructions as they, you know, become members of the committee. Uh, if there's a, a, you know, group that maybe may have policing committee that wants a police check, I, I could see that that could possibly be added to, you know, a specific committee, but, um, it's just the concerns of, of who's deciding the qualifications, the whole point of, of committees is to get that public say, get, get to the core of the public and, you know, and address the opinions, feelings and, uh, direction of public hands-on, so, um, I think we'd be, we'd be messing with a good thing trying to, um, stop people can, from coming forward, and if people were vetted too much by administration, it would probably discourage people in the process too, because it, it is a volunteer position. And, um, again, I'm grateful for everyone that came forward, I love the day, I don't mind interviewing everyone, and so, again, that's my opinion, all vote against.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I, as I read the motion, it's around, uh, reviewing best practice in relation to, uh, the process of, uh, of onboarding committee members, I, I too enjoy the, uh, the day of, of meeting residents, uh, uh, of our community that are willing to, uh, volunteer, but, uh, uh, but that's, that's what, we haven't even seen what the best practice is coming forward is yet, I think this body of work is, is, uh, is well worth expending the, uh, administration, uh, time to go out and, uh, and see what's out in other municipalities and what's in the, uh, do a lit review or whatever in terms of what best practice might be, and, uh, it's always good, I think, to inform our own processes uh, by what's out there, uh, and, and so that we can just align and make sure what we're doing, uh, not only, uh, aligns with what we want to do, but is, uh, best practice, uh, going forward, so I think the work is well worth it, and, uh, I'd like to see what comes out of the work, thank you.
Anyone else on debate? I agree with you, Council Broadhead, this is not changing anything at all, until we actually see what the best practices are. So I always look for ways to improve the way we do things in St. Albert, and I think I can think of at least one example of a committee member that should have been maybe vetted before we assign them to a committee and maybe have solved or prevented some grief. Um, so I will absolutely one hundred percent support this, um, anything to close, Council Jolly?
Yeah, just really briefly, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to change your mind, Council Ramansky, um, this motion is really not presupposing any outcomes, I think everyone sitting here really loves that day where we're interviewing members, it's not looking to restrict who can apply, it's just looking to make their experience better. Um, so, um, thank you everyone for your support.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes by a majority with Council Ramansky opposed. And that takes us to our first of two in camera conversations, is that correct? Yes. CAO dialogue, does anyone want to make?
Actually, sorry, Mary, hate to interrupt, but we have information requests that have come in.
That's true, I always skip over that, don't I? I just keep going in the agenda, all right, um, yes. And you wanted to make, make some comments too about Friday, so who has information requests?
We have two for Council Kilik and one for Council Hughes.
Okay, go ahead, Council Kilik with your IRs.
Yeah, um, so this is a follow-up asked at the November twenty first council meeting, re, uh, Q three report, page five of item number thirty eight, two point one DARP being yellow status, the impacts noted being street realignment and median improvements, are these related to St. Thomas Street? When will these items be brought to council, can project charters be prepared for these items individually or part of the total DARP? Can project charter timing be advanced to support downtown vibrancy? What budget year is the work planned for, is it dependent on timing of twenty two St. Thomas Street housing development? And the second IR is that council be provided with an update on Riverbank Landing site that clearly shows original site grade and any changes to elevations approved for new roads, buildings, et cetera, based on current height of new storm manholes and fire hydrants, that this information be consistent with information that has or could be shared with residents.
Awesome, and Council Hughes?
Um, Cheryl, can you just email me what you're referring to, because it's, it was done a while ago and I'm just, it's buried in my stuff, so please forgive me.
Put it in the chat.
Beautiful, look at you go, please provide a breakdown of the fire services and police services overtime for twenty twenty three, your date, the number of hours and total overtime costs, budget for twenty twenty three and revised forecast. I'm also looking for the number of times this year that an overtime shift was called, we already had, we were already at our over minimums for shifts, and how many overtime shifts are created from ambulance shift and, um, absences. The other question, um, the, I had a motion that we create a fire services plan by, I think it was Q three of twenty twenty four. Um, I don't know if that was already released, but I'm just announcing that now, it goes with it too, so, am I missing anything, Cheryl?
That is it.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Council Kilik wants to say a few words.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, um, and thi- this is just, uh, relative to the Snowflake Festival on Friday evening, and, uh, this is just to, um, recognize a great work that was provided by many departments within the city of St. Albert to support that great event, um, and really, it's, it's an event that supports activities of residents, and I heard absolutely nothing but, um, the highest comments, uh, relative to people attending that event. Um, what was interesting was, was the parents were commenting on taking their kids there, uh, but as well, a number of parents commented taking their grandparents there to enjoy the fun and festivities of the Snowflake Festival. So I'd like to just really provide a bit of a shout out to, uh, our public operations team that looked after road closures, uh, delivered the stage, provided all the lighting, did the barricades, um, uh, placed garbage cans, and at the end of the event, uh, spoke to some of the poor fellows that had to empty those garbage cans and ended up with eggnog all over them, uh, they did a, they smiled as they were doing it. Um, our municipal enforcement guys that were there that had to deal with some uh, parking issues, uh, people leaving cars on the streets, uh, again, they did it with a smile on their face. Um, I had to personally ask the RCMP to intervene with some, uh, rowdy drivers, uh, going up and down the back alley, and, um, hard, hard to believe this, but the, our CMP actually did it with a smile on their face as well. Uh, community services, huge shout out for all the work that they did, um, in preparing St. Albert Place, the beautiful ice sculpture, uh, out front, um, and providing the sound system that, uh, was a bit of a, uh, a bone of contention, uh, last year, worked flawlessly throughout the whole evening, and it was nice, we had a person on standby to provide that, uh, support as well. A huge shout out to the transit folks that provided our park and ride. Um, and, uh, just on a, an unrelated to Snowflake Festival, there was a incident where resident had called nine one one directly, um, it was on the night of, but it, it was nothing to do with Snowflake Festival, and, um, our, our fire and ambulance responded to that uh, event without any, uh, without a hiccup, so it was nice that even though we had our own ambulance on site uh, for event-related issues, this was handled, um, as well by, by fire and ambulance directly with a nine one one call. Um, the biggest shout out obviously, uh, goes to the great coordination work that was done by our Wreckin Parks team on a huge list of activities, uh, that started roughly two months ago, uh, normally, we probably should have started our planning on this, uh, six months ago, but in that compressed timeframe, a couple of, of, uh, key individuals um, that really stepped up in, in Wreckin Parks and did a, uh, a great job on behalf of the city, so I, I just uh, wanted to recognize that, both from my own personal, uh, direct involvement of working with these people, but also uh, on behalf of all the residents, um, kids, parents, grandparents that, uh, that attended and had a wonderful time, just thank you very much.
And Council Kilik, I'm sure all of council will stand beside me and thank you, because you stepped up. Uh, what time did, I ca- I can't remember when I had a coffee with Mike House, but it was September, maybe, maybe even later. Uh, and that Snowflake Festival was at risk, and, uh, your name came up in our conversation of somebody who might want to help, so when I asked her, I really didn't know what I was putting, getting you into, but council thanks you, um, and the residents really owe you a debt of gratitude, because I know you worked really hard, so. Anyone else have any announcements? All right, now we can, um, go in camera with our city manager. Council Hughes, you want to make a motion?
Sure, that we go in camera to have discussions with city manager in accordance to section one, uh, twenty four one A, I believe it is. Is it one A or one C, did I get it wrong? One A, perfect, thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously, I'll see you guys in a little.